All right. Good evening and thank you for joining us for the May 7th Board of Education Meeting. If you could please join me for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We will begin this evening with the report of the Superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our May 7th Board of Education Meeting. Tonight is the annual budget hearing for the 2024-2025 School District Budget, so I will try to keep my report brief as I know we have a lot of ground to cover, and we have lots of public here tonight. Our last Board of Education Meeting was just one week ago, but we're coming into the busy season in school life, so we've had a number of events in the meantime. Last Wednesday was the Rye High School Orchestra and Band Concert. The vocal and percussion was last Monday, so we've officially kicked off the spring concert season. Milton Schools will be this Thursday, and it was actually really entertaining and really nice to see. On Monday, when I was at the concert at the high school, there was a large group of senior citizens who we had invited to come to any of our shows. Actually, this was the "Freelicious Is Delicious" comment by Tom Snowden, and about a dozen of them, and I got hugs and hellos, and they were there for the show. And I don't know if they came back on Wednesday, but they loved it, and they were in that row with the little wider aisle about halfway up. But they had a great time, and they loved that "Freelicious Is Delicious" comment. Additionally, a bunch of our students and Tom Snowden went back again to community synagogue. They were invited to come and do more singing, and Tricia and I had a chance to stop by for some of it. And for the two of us, it was the first time we heard Tom Snowden sing, and he was extraordinary. Tom played and sang, and the senior citizens had a great time, and five students played piano and sang. It was wonderful. Currently, our high school students are in the world of AP exams, and there's lots of planning afoot for end-of-year celebrations and field trips and socials across elementary and middle schools. The Budget Roadshow continues. Since our last meeting, I've spoken to the Rye Chamber of Commerce, the Rye Y, Rye Presbyterian Nursery School, Milton School PTO, and Rye Rotary, which was just this morning. And I know Tricia and Jen and Jane and Kelsey and Sean, we've had lots of folks on the roadshow. It's been quite fun getting out into the community and answering questions about the budget. This Thursday, we'll be at the Osborne Retirement Community, which is always one of my favorite stops on the tour. Next Friday, I'll be at the Midland PTO Meeting, and I'm looking forward to seeing many community members and hopefully answering all of their questions about the budget and the school district. The focus on Excellence Budget Newsletter is at the printer and will soon be working its way toward mailboxes across Rye. Every year, we produce this newsletter with information about the budget vote and Board of Education trustee election and mail it to every postal address in 105-80. It will also be posted to the school district website. May 1st was National School Principals Appreciation Day, and today is National Teacher Appreciation Day, and tomorrow is National School Nurses' Day. I know the parent organizations do a great deal to celebrate and recognize our principals, teachers, and school nurses, and that many parents have reached out directly to say thank you, so I hope they are feeling appreciated. I also want to add my thanks and the board's thanks to that chorus of voices. Our next Board of Education Meeting is Tuesday, May 21st, not coincidentally, the date of the annual budget vote and Board of Education election. We will be celebrating student musicians who participated in NISMIA competitions and festivals that evening. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Snowden is as busy as a one-armed paper hanger because he's also working with the middle school, and they will have their musical review on Friday and Saturday. So this is a busy, busy time for Mr. Snowden. We appreciate all that he does for us. We will move now on to presentation and discussion number one for the public budget hearing on the 24-25 proposed budget. Dr. Byrne?
Okay. Thank you very much. Over the last few months, we've had many, many conversations about the budget and many presentations out in the community, and tonight is a chance for members of the community to share their thoughts with us if they have not yet already done that. So we'll just do a quick overview between Gabby Peruccio and myself. So when we are talking about the proposed budget, this is the adopted budget that maintains all current programs and services without the addition of any new staff. It is a tax cap override budget, which means that it requires a 60% approval from the community, but we are talking about a budget that is 110-556-311 that is proposed. That's a budget-to-budget increase of 6.41% over this year's budget, which is $103.89 million.
We're having a technical difficulty.
Okay.
Sorry about that. So just to review the expenditure summary, as we look at the categories that we've pretty much identified as our big-picture view of salaries and benefits, general education, special ed, athletics, technology, curriculum development, transportation, district-wide support, facilities, debt service, inter-fund transfers for capital and special aid. For the total budget, you can see here the breakdown and the change from this current year to our proposed year.
We've shared this slide a lot out in the community in helping people to understand what were the issues that pushed us over the tax cap. If we look just simply at two of these items, salaries and benefits and transportation, right there, we are over the cap. The increased health insurance costs, the increased pension expenses that are mandated by the New York State Constitution, the increase in Social Security and Medicare and benefit expenses really have created significant challenges to us, as well as just the overall impact, as we've all felt, of historic inflation these last number of years. So you'll see throughout in the general education budget, just for things like supplies, batteries, textbooks, that one of those drivers, $214,000. There is a slight decrease in special education, but across many of these areas, it really pushes us to be above the cap, and we still had lots of needs that we needed to address. We have talked about the additional capital expenditures that are operating expenses, not part of the capital project, that are critical and that are included in this budget, and that was a commitment that we made to the community when the community voted to approve the $79 million capital project, that we would continue to make improvements to our facilities through the operating budget. And this is one of those years where we have $1.2 million of athletic facilities upgrades. They are necessary upgrades. These are the three highest priority projects in that they are in the worst condition and reach the most number of students and community members. So the high school gym will get a renovation, including a new gym floor, as that floor can no longer be refinished and resurfaced. The high school softball field, which has long been in need of major upgrades, will get drainage improvements to the surface, new grass, new clay, new backstops, and a multitude of improvements, including significant drainage. And the high school wrestling room, which has really grown, wrestling in the Rye community has exploded in a positive way with a tremendous number of kids participating both in rec programming and high school programming, and that's a space that we know has been exactly the same for a very long time, with the same mats, the same pads, the same air because there is no fresh air ventilation in that space, and that will be getting an upgrade. In addition, some pretty significant security improvements, the completion of the Salto lock system here at the high school and the middle school to be in line with the three elementary schools, the upgraded PA lockdown systems, both here at the high school and middle school, in both of the buildings as well. So these drivers really are what has pushed us over. Again, I said, we're keeping all of our programs. We're not adding any new staff. This is really helping us to keep the good, important programming that we've put in place and continue to uphold our commitment to the community in terms of improving our facilities.
So when you take a look at the revenue summary, so fund accounting, your revenues have to equal your expenses. One change that has happened since the last time we've looked at this slide is the increase in state aid. So our foundation aid has been restored to the current year's levels, which allowed us to increase our state aid assumptions for revenue next year, which the domino effect of that allowed us to decrease what we anticipate in collecting for the tax levy. As a result of that, you will actually see a board action to revise the budget adoption resolution to identify the change in the levy. It does not change the overall budget and what we're asking for in terms of funding to support for next year, but it does, as a result of that increase in state aid, slightly reduce the tax levy. So the resolution had to be amended. So what does this mean? We are looking at a tax levy increase of 6.55%, a tax levy of $98,714,887. Currently, our estimated taxable assessments sits at $102,837,768. This is a fluctuating number that we continue to receive updates from the assessors office of the City of Rye and will continue to do so up until the board adopts the final warrant. And an estimated tax rate at this time of $743.12 per thousand of total assessment.
So obviously, it's still possible for anyone to share comments with the Board of Education at rcsdboard@ryeschools.org, myself at burne.eric@ryeschools.org, or at my phone number, 914-967-6100, extension 1100, with Gabby at peruccio.gabriella@ryeschools.org, or extension 1110. And if you can't remember any of those, then you can remember feedback at rischools.org. One new, a couple of details in terms of the vote. The vote will be right here at Rye Middle School in the gymnasium on Tuesday, May 21st, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. If you wish to vote early, you can vote early by mail by submitting an application for an early mail-in vote. They are available at all of the schools in the main entrances, and they are also available at the district offices at 555 Theodore Frem. You can actually mail it in, and a ballot will be mailed to your home, or you can just come to the school district office. You can complete an early mail-in vote ballot, and you can actually cast your ballot right then and there, put it in a sealed envelope, and there's a collection box with a district clerk. So if you're not sure if you're going to be around on May 21st, or you'd just like to vote early for the first time, because that's new in New York State, this is the second election, you can do that. The first one was the presidential primary a few weeks ago, and then in the additional state-level primaries later in June, it will be offered as well. So that's just stop by the district office, or pick up a form at any of the schools, and you can either hand-deliver it, mail it. If you mail it, you'll get a ballot back in the mail to your home, or you can just stop over and process your ballot. So the next steps are, that is it, the budget vote and trustee election, the last step. So the dates have been disappearing from this arrow for months now, and we're down to the final one, which is the vote itself on May 21st, 2024.
Great. Thank you very much. Any comments from the board? Okay. Okay. I was going to open it to the public, and then we can...
I was just going to say one very quick thing. I think we've obviously reviewed this a number of times over the last three or four months, and I think it's just important to state that, you know, I think as every year as we do a budget and we try to figure out how are we going to continue to bring an excellent education to students and also evolve and grow as a school district, so because we know needs change for students, and that happens over time, you know, that because of that, we're always trying to balance the needs of that and the needs of the taxpaying community. And so I just want to emphasize that, you know, I think there's been a great deal of work done to consistently try to remain tax cap compliant whenever we can. The tax cap is not a vehicle that really works for doing that over the long haul, especially when you have inflation rates like we've seen in the last few years, and costs that just incrementally go up on their own. Healthcare insurance, we have no way to control that, or, you know, we do our best to be in situations where we are in plans that are working to keep those costs low. So I just, just as a final note of, we understand that asking for an override is not a light thing to do, but when it's necessary, it's necessary, and I think this is one of those moments where it is necessary for us to maintain all of the wonderful things that we're bringing to our students.
Thank you. And I really, I agree. That's an important point, because back in 2015, when the district, the board and administration brought the very first override to the community, they had tried to prepare the community by explaining then that this was going to be a regular occurrence every four or five years, just because of the way the tax cap is designed and structured in terms of how it impacts communities like Rye. We have managed nine years since that last override, and we do believe that the good decisions made over many years, previous boards, previous administrations in that nine-year period have made that possible, and we think that we're making some very good decisions here and planning here that is long-term and will put us in a similar position. You know, I know the board is all aware, this is not an uncommon thing. Just our neighbors in Harrison, in the Harrison Schools, Scarsdale, Chapqua, are all bringing override budgets to their communities because it is just a structural challenge for, as you can look at that profile of school districts, districts like ours that we're up against.
And I think it's important to note that while we are grateful and appreciative of the state budget's reinstitution of our foundation aid, it is worth repeating that the foundation aid that we have received is the amount for the '23-'24 school year, which will be applied for the '24-'25 school year. So that's not an increase.
No.
It is simply a rollover of already given funds for next year. So...
Right. And they did reduce some other, so foundation aid is just one of the state aid sources? And while they did restore the foundation aid, they actually then made an additional reduction in our BOSI's aid that was part of the calculation, which is why when we saw the restoration of state aid, it was just $332,000 as opposed to $383,000 because they did that other reduction on the side there.
And it continues to be a revenue source that diminishes over the years. In the same years that we maintained the tax cap, it wasn't, it, state aid continued to decline in those times.
And has continued to decline. And given the statements made by the current administration and the State Senate and Assembly, that they will be looking at the formulas for funding school districts and the tax cap formulas for school districts, there is not much, I do not hold much hope or belief that we are going to see a windfall, as it were, related to state aid. So it is unfortunately incumbent upon us, our taxpayers, to be the primary source of funding our schools and our programs for our students. And that is no function of anything that we here at the board can do or the administration can do. And so it is, as Ms. Boyer mentioned, it is really a thoughtful process that the board goes through when thinking about taxpayer funds being used for the school district and ensuring that the programs and the services that are provided meet and match the Rye commitment, the beliefs, and the standards that the community has come to know and to accept and expect from our school district. So with that said, we have members of the public here. So I would like to invite members of the public to come to the podium. Please know that the board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion, so please understand that we may not respond to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process and research an issue. At this time, comments that we will be soliciting are only related to those related to the budget. Any additional comments will come in during the next portion of our meeting, which is the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We would ask that you hold your remarks to three minutes, and when you come to the podium, please state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization.
A good idea. Hello. Good evening. Hi, my name is Kayla Byrd, and I live at 51 Green Avenue. I've been a member of the Rye community since 2018. I'm a parent of a third-grade student and twin students in fourth grade, all at Milton School. I am currently one of the co-presidents of RAISE, Rye's All-Inclusive Special Education Parent Group, a member of the district's Social Emotional Committee, as well as a board member of Hurd &amp; Rye, a community organization focused on lectures around parenting. I'm here tonight to support the proposed budget, which has been unanimously adopted by the Board of Education for the 2024-2025 academic year. The budget maintains all of the district's current programs and updates curriculum without adding teachers or staff. With this budget, the Rye City School District is committed to providing excellence in teaching and learning, ensuring continual instruction, innovation, and growth in academic and extracurricular programming by utilizing data analysis, supporting the physical and mental health of students, providing inclusive special education programming, and a range of supports that meet the needs of our diverse population of students with disabilities within the district, maintaining the Board of Education class-size guidelines, implementing research-based professional development, providing safe, secure, healthy, energy-efficient, innovative learning environments, ensuring efficient utilization of resources and personnel, creating a fiscally responsible budget that provides long-term financial stability. It is because of all these great things that my third-grade son is able to continually flourish and grow within the wonderful classroom model ICT, Integrated Co-teaching. Should we choose not to adopt this budget, school would most certainly look very different. I commend Dr. Byrne, administrators, and the staff, and the Board of Education for continuing to uphold the Rye commitment and stand behind the words you pledged to our community. Thanks for all you do every day dedicated to our children.
Thank you. Thank you, Kayla.
Hello. My name is Daniela Kieho. I live at 5 Osborne Road.
And I'm Caroline Scully. I live at 110 Drake Smith Lane in Rye.
Your RMS and Rye High Schools PO co-presidents support Dr. Byrne's proposed budget for 2024 and 2025, even though it requires an override to the property tax cap for the first time in nearly a decade. With increased costs due to inflation, reduction of New York State aid to schools, and rising health insurance costs, to name a few, the district increased the budget is necessary to maintain current programs and services, both at RMS, Rye High School, and within the district. The district's proposed budget also ensures completion of important capital infrastructure projects within the district. At Rye Middle School and Rye High School, this includes essential security upgrades, including the PA lockdown system to keep our kids safe, and upgrades to athletic facilities such as field drainage projects on the school campus and the high school gym's new floor and wrestling room. An override budget requires a 60% supermajority vote of the public to pass it. Please, please, take the time to come out to vote when the budget is on the ballot on May 21st, and we thank the board for your dedication and your hard work in keeping our schools safe and at the top of education.
Thank you, Daniela and Caroline.
Hi. I'm Laura Fry. I'm at 6 Indian Hill Road in Rye, and I'm the co-president of the Midland PTO.
Hi. My name is Valerie Lappam. I'm at 6 Benton Street, and I'm a co-president at Midland School as well.
Hi. I'm Sharon Mantell. I live at 42 Colby Ave, and I'm the co-president of the PTO at Osborne. I've been a resident of Rye for almost eight years, and I have two boys, one sixth grader at RMS and one in third grade at Osborne. I'm honored to have spent this past year as co-president of the PTO with Carol Figpen, who couldn't be here tonight, and will continue on for one more year. This year has given me an in-depth look at what it takes to run a school district. I'm continually impressed by the level of time and focus the administration spends on improvements and updates to the curriculum and academics, facilities management and improvement, safety and security, online and in school, and of such importance in this day, the social and emotional well-being of our children. Your actions truly follow the Rye commitment. We too have seen the impact of rising costs as we develop fun and educational programming for our schools. To your point, Dr. Byrne, for example, we know that the cost of school buses for field trips has grown astronomically year over year, and we don't want to have to cancel field trips because of it. We need to come up with more money to pay for the things that we, whoops, that are critical for our students' enrichment, too. We know the time has come on a broader scale when we need to invest more money to continue seeing the high level of excellence we are used to. On behalf of the three elementary schools, I am sharing our unanimous backing of the budget override. We thank you for your time and your expertise. You have our full support.
Keeping things interesting, I'm speaking separately, but together. I'm Chrissy Duggan. I live at 7 Robert Chrisfield Place. I am a co-president of the Milton PTO, and I'm joined by Anna King, my co-president. So we thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight to voice our support of the recommended Rye City School District budget for the 2024-2025 school year. In the interest of brevity, we echo and appreciate the sentiments expressed by our counterparts from the PTOs and POs of the other Rye City School District schools. We fully support, we also fully support the proposed budget, recognizing its significance in upholding existing programs and services district-wide while enriching the educational experience for all Rye students. This budget, aligned with the Rye commitment, plays a critical role in providing the best opportunities, programs, and electives for Rye students to learn and excel in a safe environment. We're very grateful to Dr. Byrne, the Board of Education, and all the other individuals who helped in shaping this budget. With the increased costs across the board, this couldn't have been an easy task. We truly appreciate the time, effort, and careful consideration that went into the budget, prioritizing all Rye students and the community at large. You have our full support, and we thank you.
Thank you all.
Hi, everybody. My name is Genevieve Weber. I'm a resident of Rye for 15 years. I live at 53 Midland Ave. I have three daughters, a freshman, a sixth grader, and a fourth grader, and they are all softball players. I am also the president of Rye Girls Softball, and I'm here to speak in support of the budget and really through the lens of equity, and how thrilled I am that the girls softball field is getting the attention that it deserves. thrilled I am that the girls' softball field is getting the attention that it deserves, and it's long overdue. I'm thrilled to see some of our family and our parents here, as well as our previous president of Rye Girl Softball, who really paved the way, Sarah Ball. So to give a little bit of history, Sarah Ball started the conversation of field upgrades a number of years ago. And I was in one of those meetings, and it was a tough conversation where Sarah had a multi, multiple pictures, multi-layer poster board with pictures of the inequity for the girls' field compared to the baseball field. And unfortunately, at that point, the voice wasn't heard. The conversation has continued. And during that time, Rye Girl Softball has grown very much, not just with the board and parents involved, but we are now at 210 players and 16 teams. We've brought in professional coaches, and the girls are really, really excelling, both on the field, off. But it's more than just a sport. It's about social, emotional learning. And the program is a pipeline for the high school. We're beginning to see the benefits of a stronger rec league. I'm looking at Jim Joyce in the corner, his daughter Caroline is one of our other pitchers. And my daughter and Caroline really were one of the first cohorts where the rec program began to focus on development. They are now freshmen on the varsity team. So continuing the conversation through the lens of equity, last year, when the voices really weren't heard in multiple years before, I went to the baseball field on a beautiful day, and I took photos of the baseball field, and then I took photos of the girls' field. And I emailed them side by side to all the administrators and said, "This has to end." And in response, it was a wonderful, wonderful expression of understanding and commitment. So I thank Dr. Byrne, and I thank the school board. And so these upgrades really are anchored in years of advocacy and provide our players with the value that they deserve and really uphold the sport that is growing systemically. We know that there's inequity in girls' and boys' sports. It's not just in Rye. It's a national systemic issue. And I like that Rye is leading in the way and showing that it cares. So I ask for those who are listening to please acknowledge the need for this bill. We're just coming off, we had an excellent game against Eastchester, overtime, eighth inning. And to be honest, the field, it's sad. There's uneven, where uneven points of the field where ground balls pop up and go in the opposite direction. The backstop needs to be replaced. There's a temporary homerun fence, and there's a batting cage that actually is not used by the girls. It's used by the rugby players to bounce a ball off of because it's collapsing. So having said all of that, administration knows the need. And what you saw on that slide is truly reflective of what is needed to make this field a competitive place where our skilled players can, can really show the years of training and really what they have to give to the sport of softball. So I thank you to the administration. I thank all of those in the corner, just sort of a slice of all the parents, that help this sport be what it is. And I don't know, I'm thrilled. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Genevieve. Is there anyone else from the public on the board's budget? No? Okay. For the board, any final comments? All right. Thank you all for, the public for coming and attending the public budget hearing. And just to reiterate, probably for the 10th time in 30 minutes, May 21 from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. is when the budget vote and trustee elections will take place in the middle school gymnasium. So we will now move on to hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We welcome and encourage our community members to address the board at this time on issues that are not on the agenda. Please come to the podium, state your name, address, and if you are representing an organization. The board is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. So please understand that we may not respond publicly to your comments or questions at this time. We take your comments seriously and may need more time to process or research an issue. We will ensure questions will be addressed by the appropriate staff member or possibly answered at a future board meeting. We will not entertain comments regarding individual students or district personnel, as those are protected under state and federal privacy laws. Please know we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we would ask you to follow the appropriate administrative channels. As a reminder, the community may always submit written comments at any time to the board by sending those to rcsdboard@ryeschools.org. Seeing no one from the public coming to speak on non-agenda items, we will move on to our consent agenda. Can I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Chris Repetto, seconded by Sean Claphart. Let's take a look at this evening's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Ms. Pruchio, if we could just, one more time for those who were in the cheap seats and may not have heard it, if we could talk about the budget adoption revision that is part of this, please.
Yes. So there is an action item on the agenda for the board to adopt a revised resolution for adopting the budget for the 24-25 school year. The reason why this was brought forward is, as stated before, as a result of the change in state aid, we had the ability to lower the tax levy that we were asking to support this budget. It doesn't change the overall budgeted amount. It just identifies the decrease in the tax levy and the ripple effect of that in terms of the percentage needed for the tax levy and the tax rate.
Okay, great. So in layman's terms, everybody has to pay a scooch less.
A scooch less.
Just a scooch.
Yep.
But a scooch is a scooch, and I'll take it.
It's about $2.41 per thousand of assessment less.
That is really a scooch. Okay, great. Dr. Byrne, if you could give just a little color, please, to the MOU related to the city of Rye and the AEDs?
Yes, there is a new law that's going into effect that recreation programs need to have AEDs, automatic defibrillators, available. You know, from us as a school district, we have portable ones that are assigned to all of our coaches that go to all of our games and practices. This is a new law that I know for sure that Assemblyman Steve Otis of Rye championed across the state. So in order for the city to be able to meet that obligation, we are entering into an agreement so they can install AEDs in cabinets at all of our fields, because they use all of our fields for different programming. So they've worked with Rob Camigliano on locations for all of them. The city will be paying for the installation for the cabinets, for the AEDs, and the maintenance of them. And we've just, this is literally the agreement to allow this to happen. So we're really happy to be able to do this for the community, for the city. And this is just memorializing that new law that they have to meet.
Great. And these are external location AEDs. So they, the rec programs will not be coming into the building to then go outside to get their AEDs.
They'll be externally. And I, I don't know the details of how their coaches will access them.
Yep.
I'm not sure if it's a code on a cabinet. I haven't seen the cabinets myself. But they will be at each of our elementary schools and here at our fields, the turf field and the upper field.
And we already have existing AEDs with inside our own buildings as well.
We have AEDs with inside our building, and we have AEDs with all of our coaches at athletics practices and games.
Okay, great. Consent agenda professional appointments. Dr. Byrne?
Well, I, as I shared with the board, I'm really pleased that we have a recommendation here for the appointment of our new Rye Middle School Assistant Principal, Mr. Nick Clare, who's here with us tonight. Nick has been with us for the last two years as an incredibly talented instructional coach. So it will be a big loss on the coaching side of things, but I'm sure Dr. Murray will find a suitable replacement. But Nick has worked across both the middle school and the high school and district-wide. He was a very talented mathematics teacher. Nick came to us from Horace Greeley High School in Chapqua, and before that had been in Hyde Park at FD Roosevelt. And we're just thrilled that Nick emerged from a pool of 181 candidates. That was a lot of resume screening, a lot of screening interviews, and then there was a full committee that worked with Mr. Di Giovanni, with parents, with teachers, with staff members at the school. So we're thrilled that Nick's here tonight, and I hope the board accepts this recommendation. But I also want to thank Jen Johnson, who's been serving as acting interim assistant principal throughout this school year.
Great. Thank you. Anything else for professional appointments? Okay. Consent agenda classified appointments? Consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education? And consent agenda curriculum instruction and assessment? Seeing no other questions. Can, all those in favor to approve the consent agenda? Seven, nothing. Wonderful. On this evening's consent agenda, we have some great highlights for everybody. Hold on, I gotta find out where I brought them. Here they are. Okay.
Nick, you're official now. That's...
We're getting there. Don't...
Don't hit me with the hammer.
We're gonna get there, Nick. Just hold on. Building the excitement and anticipation for you. We do have an update to our bullying, harassment, and intervention policy that the board has accepted. In addition, there is the resolution to amend the budget proposal. We have the AEDs for the city of Rye located outside of the Rye City School facilities. We also have an agreement with the Wainwright House, which, once again, we'd love to have our community partnerships to support the community, as well as the school district, where the board will hold its annual retreat on July 11th and July 12. And we have the appointment of Mr. Nick Clare for the middle school assistant principal. Congratulations, Nick.
Wait, Jane.
Oh, yes. So sorry.
Well, I'd like to point out that we also approved the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association slate of directors. And congratulations to Jane Anderson for stepping up in a leadership position for our community. So thank you very much.
Kelsey, Kelsey, Kelsey. Thank you very much for the shout-out. I was hoping we were just gonna scooch on by that. But thank you. I do appreciate it. I'm happy to help whenever I can. So moving on, now we will move on to, sorry. Yeah, okay. Oh, wait. No, I'm, I'm mucked that up. Ms. Boyle?
Oh, yes.
At this time, sorry, because I, this whole evening, I've been befuddled. Would you take a moment, please, to help share with the community what we have repealed in policy as part of our consent agenda?
Yes. So as part of the consent agenda, we did repeal one of our policies, 51-52.1, which is admission of international exchange students. This is a policy that came under review after some questions that were raised throughout the year about, you know, what is the process? How do we accept exchange students? And it came to our policy committee. And after reviewing what would be the legal requirements for the school to accept exchange students, non-resident exchange students, there was quite a process that was involved in this. And I think when this policy originally came to be, the visa process was very different than it is currently. And it would have required us to not only commit some funding, but also some operational support if we wanted to maintain this as a policy. And just as a point of interest, there's actually never been an exchange program here in Rye that has existed. But it was called an exchange student policy. So the recommendation from the policy committee was to repeal the policy for that reason.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update. So now we will move on to communications to and from the board. We have, did not have, well, it was only a week.
Yeah.
So we didn't have any meetings in between our previous meeting and this evening's meeting. But we do have future meetings coming up. Health and safety on May 16. Thank you, Mr. Stein. And we have our policy meeting on May 29, curriculum council on May 29, and technology on May 30. So it's gonna be lots of updates to come to us soon. No to pedestrian safety, right? They didn't meet yet. Okay. So that was only a week. So any other communications to and from the board? No? All right. Seeing none, I will just remind everybody for the 50th time that our next meeting will take place on May 21, at which time there will be the budget vote and trustee election, which will be taking place in the Rye Middle School Gym from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. We hope all of our community members will take the opportunity to participate in their civic duty and responsibility to vote. And we will also be honoring and recognizing our students who are participating in the NISM, which is the musical program at the state level. So with all of that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Chris Repetto, seconded by Tom Stein. All those in favor? Seven, nothing. Thank you all so much. Have a good evening.